We close as soon as possible, but the abstract is behind a couple of weeks. It takes a couple of weeks to get that done. So we have a close date set for March twenty seventh, but if we can get it done sooner, we will.
I just personally, Jason, a little bit before this meeting and he said we could condemn it if we want. We could fine Ryan or not pull him permit. Or we could just say, go ahead and sell it. But as long as the new owner knows that he might be liable to pay double the fee for the electrical permit, so that's a permit.
That has not been disclosed to me, but now that I am aware of it, I am legally required to disclose that.
He just told me possibly as far as the structural permits too.
Yep, I am aware of that and I did disclose that to the buyer.
But I don't think Jason's willing to work with us. He not gonna just say we're gonna shut it down, but just as long as the new owner knows what's wrong with his property.
Yep, he's very aware of that.
Our motion would be to.
Resign.
For an extension.
Yeah, and I just wanna ask your question too. He seemed we're gonna potentially double those, is that? Is that allowed? I mean, is that in our ordinance that if they don't do that, that we can do that?
But they're fine or whatever.
Jim, Jason just told me that if, he said it's up to the council if you want to do that, because the permit was not pulled. If it permit wasn't pulled, you can get extensions.
Right.
But no permit was asked for.
At the council's discretion.
Yes. He just, he just told me you could double it, or you could fine, whatever you want.
So.
I wanna add that that'd be a hell of a way to penalize a potential buyer.
Yeah, that's right. This guy, like, that's my thing is like, my thing is that if we can get this investor to come in, and I'm from West Des Moines, but I'm sorry, I love y'all. I'm starting to love y'all. But, so I'm here a lot, and honestly, I would, I'm even considering moving you actually through your economic development director position on Wednesday. So I'm Theresa, by the way.
Oh.
Is it with you? I'm Theresa.
Tremendous part.
As a general, in general, I pride myself on being a good person, doing what's right for everybody. And I think what's right for the community is if this guy comes in and has a great experience with this flip because we were honest with him. What is to stop him from doing that to other properties and really helping rehab the community where it's needed? That's, that's kind of my movement.
So. Can we just, yeah, no extra fines?
No doubling of the fines.
No doubling of fines.
Neither to the new owner.
Go ahead and sell it and then, but the seller's obviously subject to pulling permits.
So I have a question about that. Could we put that on the settlement to be paid out at closing so that he isn't responsible for the fines that you incurred?
Well, there, I don't think, that's what we're saying, I don't think there's gonna be any fines.
Oh, okay. Because that would be my concern too.
At the council discretion.
Now, Jason said at the council discretion, he said you do whatever you want tonight. But now that he's saying this is gonna be sold, I said just let it go.
So with that being said, you still want your extension? Is that what, because that's what you're actually asking?
I just wanna make sure the buyer, whatever, however you wanna order it, everyone, the buyer has that time. Do you want an extension until our next council meeting? With that, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, but they're gonna be closed then and then we'll know if the guy pulled permits. I'm sure he'll pull them pretty quickly.
Yes.
Can Jason just put in a, can we just have an update in our council packet? Just, I mean, discuss it, there's just an update that, yes, it was sold and maybe it's something Matt can just follow up with. Yes, it was sold, yes, they pulled permits, just put it in his update.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I would just let you, uh, the buyer know that even though you guys aren't going to put any, um, fines or anything, or like double the fee or whatever you wanna say, he will be required by the state electrical. Though, the state electrical person is gonna be the one who determines that, so.
For the fines?
For the fines, for the electrical part of it, but not for the. Yes, so for, for the electrical inspection, they don't have anything to say on that.
Okay.
So since, since electrical was put in the house without any permits or anything, I would just have them look into or contact a state, the state electrical inspector
Okay.
to see what that process is gonna be, because, because the council doesn't have any, and the beast, they don't have a say in the state electrical inspector.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, that part I know.
And you just wish to reach out to the state inspector, he's the state.
State inspector.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
He, he will double.
So, okay, so I should, I should, with the council.
Okay. I wanna make sure the buyer's aware of that.
I think my next meeting, you can just communicate with Matt if he'll, if he's.
We have this, you or Theresa can contact Matt and just, Theresa, can you make sure you or Ryan give an update to Matt?
Oh, yeah.
Once you're closed and permits are pulled.
Sorry, Matt. Right, Ryan. Okay, I'm gonna give each of you my card, so you have my number.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You go, try.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've got a little one here, so we're gonna head out.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mike, I'm from Bamrock, out of Columbia, South Carolina. And we provide perimeter protection for businesses, in this case, Manheim.
Can you grab your.
All right. Give you a little primer on exactly what we do and how it operates. So basically, what we do is we build an interior fence. So there's already a fence up, we come inside of it four to eight inches and build our device. It goes up to ten feet tall. The reason it does that is people are gonna stand on his perimeter fence and jump right over the top unless we get a little height. No one's jumping over ten feet. Even my young athletic days when I could dunk a basketball, this is about fifty years ago. Even then, I wouldn't go up to the rim and jump off onto a floor, it's not gonna do it. So we force everyone to go down low. The way we operate, we take a twelve volt battery. We take that twelve volts and we amplify it to seven to nine thousand volts. Takes one point one seconds for that to happen. Once that energizer's loaded, that energy down that interior line and we release that energy thousands of a second. Manheim has large problems. So it would, first it'd be impossible for anyone to do this in under fifteen to twenty minutes on foot. So every one point one second, we do a perimeter check in three ten thousandths of a second. We bring that energy back to an alarm system, an alarm panel. That panel's looking for a nice clean return. In my world, a nice clean return is two to four thousand volts. Lots of things can knock it down, vegetation, an animal hitting it, knocking it off. Looking for five consecutive negative returns before I set the alarm off. When I set the alarm off, it's all below that site and silently back to my call center in Columbia, South Carolina. And I start going through a call list, so let's say Michael's number one on my call list, I'm gonna call him at two thirty. Mike, oh yeah, number one on the list. We've got a break on the northern perimeter, two hundred twenty feet from northeast corner. What do you wanna do? We also incorporate cameras with these systems. So you sit at home on your little wifi, bring up that particular fence line, look at it, hey, we just had a big snowstorm, took out the big sycamore tree on the corner. Let's run it up and go back to bed and take care of it in the morning. Or I got five guys on a flatbed truck, they're robbing the blind, police call, the local police department, it's a verified alarm. Police love verified alarms, they know where to go and what to expect. So that's what we do. We do this all over the country, I've got over six thousand installations all over the country, I've probably got a hundred of you guys, a hundred with Manheim. And what we do is we protect businesses that have outdoor storage or their large amounts of valuable inventory that sit outside. Think about equipment room companies, Manheim, Caterpillar, John Deere, folks like that, that's what we guard. UPS, FedEx, all the major trucking companies, we guard all those guys. So that's what we do. So we're here asking you folks, allow us to install that system here at Manheim. Now, the reason he's up here is obviously to tell you what Manheim does and why they need the system, that's how the system operates. If you've got any questions at all, I'd love to answer.
What's, uh, if a kid got on there, what's it gonna do to a kid?
You guys have cattle fences around here? Same thing, pops you one time. So if you're walking across this carpet, stocking feet, nice drive day, you reach out, hit that door handle, you're gonna get a static shot. Fifteen to twenty thousand volt static shot, you don't do it again. Your body pours electricity and you don't wanna do it. It's not gonna injure anybody. We test and label the devices to the international standards for these particular devices. So just like your computer has a little sticker on the bottom that says UL, we actually do that with these, the whole system. So it's tested and labeled so that it's a safe and reliable system, will not injure anybody.
I guess our code says no barbed wire, no electric fences in the city to do it.
That's correct.
We gotta change our ordinances.
That's correct.
Did you say their fence that they currently have, and then yours goes on the inside?
Inside of it.
So a child wouldn't really just stick their hand out and touch it because it's far enough in, they have to go up it over the first fence to get to the second fence.
Yeah. It's four to eight, yes, correct. Correct, so it's four to eight, eight inch separation. You really don't want it far away because someone could break in through the fence line and manipulate it. And you don't want it at a certain depth because someone could get actually trapped between them, zone of the trap. And you don't want that to happen either, that's why you want them fairly close together. And that's part of the standard, the standard dictates one hundred to two hundred millimeters. In our world, in America, that's four to eight inches.
How many break-ins have you had out there?
Well, I've asked, yeah, that's why.
In the recent.
I asked our police chief and he's unaware of any.
No break-ins, we've had one theft in the last two years, but there have been some, uh, thefts and stuff up at Carl's.
Does he have cameras outside now?
I believe so, yes.
Because when he first opened, he didn't have.
Right, yep. And then we've recently had some issues out in Omaha at our other location where we're adding the electric fence out there.
Have you ever had any claim against your system?
Oh, he claims, absolutely, I'm in business, people sue me.
How many?
Uh, probably a half dozen or so, but I carry a six million dollar insurance policy on everything I get, everything I put up out there. That's just the way it does, and it works. Uh, most of my customers are self insured, don't know about Manheim. But most of my customers are self insured. So if anything comes out of that particular business, it's on, it's on them. I mean, they're not going to the insurance company and having to write a check themselves.
Do you currently have security cameras at the option place?
No.
No.
So hypothetically, what is the process, if we were to entertain us, what is the process?
Change your ordinance.
The whole ordinance, so then this could.
As long as the council gives their written consent, that is in the ordinance right now, so that's why he's here.
Okay.
Really, yeah. That's why Matt's.
There's a couple of, it says unless such land consists of ten acres more, you have to move it. And is it used as agricultural. So that's the conditions of us giving written consent on that. So I, you know, without our actual attorney here, I think it probably would require an exchange on there.
We can always, if, if you're okay with it, we can mess it to that to me to, here is to say it was due, you know, gonna have to move it actually. If you're okay with it.
Are you, uh, concerned that you're gonna have a ration break-ins if we pass this on to get a legal interpretation? By the time we get, I mean, probably by the next meeting at the end of the.
My, so it says it is unlawful for a person to use barbed wire or electrical fences to enclose land within the city limits without the written consent of the council.
Oh, okay, hold it, I think you're right, unless.
Unless. Unless.
Unless.
Such land consists of ten acres or is used for agriculture, so.
Oh, that's why we have it, so.
No, that's, I just, that's what it says, I just.
So, so is this your normal practice for your, your business throughout Manheim? I mean, all the locations, this is, this is your normal practice?
Yes.
Yes.
I stand corrected, thank you, I appreciate you.
I mean, I would still like to get Dwayne's.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and counsel, Herr Patrick, many businesses do that as a preemptive measure. Uh, you know, they're, they're around a lake, I feel, hey, you know, we got five guys broke in with a flatbed truck and took
Right.
four hundred catalytic converters in the course of three hours.
Right.
I think companies also fast down, it's unbelievable.
That's kinda work, yeah.
And you didn't have it for the understanding here.
That's where we're at now, Omaha's had a few break-ins in the last few months and we wanna be preventive and stuff.
Well, I think here in town, we've had some extra theft stuff going on.
And there's a lot of cars out there.
There is. So I'm, I would just make sure Dwayne is okay with.
We're, we're.
You're giving the approval, I will, the approval of the.
Could we, yeah, could we, we, could we do a motion kinda like you did in the thing and say, we would approve this subject to the, okay?
Subject to the.
Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, as long as Dwayne says it's not, we're following what our ordinance says, I'm.
Okay.
John.
Move them second, buddy.
Okay, how you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Call off.
Yes, Renzo.
Yes. Oh, do you guys work with our local law enforcement?
Um, somewhat, yes. I, I called them, or, but we have issues or something's going on, I will contact them, or the county, the county sheriff or, or if you can.
Contact.
I have a question, since there was just a big discussion here about permits. I'd like to know exactly what kind of permit I would be required to pull here.
We need to will sign up with James.
James, yeah.
Can you?
Here you can touch.
Information for our, uh, showing at the ministerito, and he can go.
Can we come up to the website for that?
Yeah, I think it's on the website, is it?
The application is on the website, but your team has already been in contact with Jason, so they can just call him.
Oh, yeah.
Their bulldogs are always on there.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time out today, thank you.
Okay, nine, two thousand point three, twenty four city, but at this time, open public hearing, if you receive any advice. Any comments, concerns for the general public? Close of public hearing. Resolution number twenty three oh nine C, adoption of the two thousand twenty three, twenty four city, but any comments?
Yeah, I just wanna explain something that, of course, you're all aware of that low back change.
Sure.
Stay quiet, and they got us just all the cities, um, I would, in, uh, bad position, not, uh, because of the timing, but because of the money that we gotta receive. So our valuation went from eighteen million that we were discussing at the budgetful session to sixteen million. So we experienced a rough quarter, seventeen million plus, that's in a dollar, now it's twenty three thousand dollars. That's the value, the good news is that we had our budget and our discussion around it, working around the reserves. So it, well, it happens in the perfect year that we're working around reserves, we were supposed to use around three hundred thousand, we're getting three hundred twenty three thousand. So that's kinda, and the, the little bit of good news about it, and the only thing we just had to deposit is about vacation on the staff. But I've been in contact with the county authorities. Okay. So we just need the resolution twenty three oh nine.
So much.
How's that, Herr Patrick? How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Call off.
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Okay, ten, general obligation with charge funding loan agreement, and border money, border and principal amount, not exceed one hundred fifty thousand. Do you wanna explain that, just like you were saying?
That's the money, yeah, we do every year, probably, our council number three, that, that one that covers the health insurance and, uh, property insurance. Number one, check in, and this whole thing that Brian wants to do it again.
Exactly.
Utility side, that's really the subject. Uh, we used to issue two hundred fifty, we want two hundred fifty because that was the recommendation of Chad to kinda help with his stuff, kinda. So we went through all these things, but that's really what it is. Uh, we go ahead and approve it, we receive the money, I think the closing will be in July or some month later, and that goes to the property insurance and the.
How would that affect, if we approved this now, would that affect anything, would that affect anything that Brian was talking about, this working with Chip, or is that just?
That's a. That's a situation, people wants to do something like that on the utility side.
Okay, all right.
This is insurance as in your health?
Health insurance and property insurance.
Okay.
Those.
So forth, okay.
So, yeah, but it's completely on the other side.
Right, okay, right, all right.
We're just doing what we have been doing for the last two years.
What we got, open the public hearing, did you receive anything?
No.
Comments, concerns? Public hearing? Close of public hearing? The resolution number twenty three oh eight C, taking additional action, we're the whole thing.
Need a motion.
Motion, uh, motion that. We go call off.
Oh, sorry.
Set the way, Patrick, how you vote, Patrick? Call off.
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Eleven, soccer concession proposal, Dustin and Angie Capes.
Dustin.
And then you actually talked to Rick Norris a little bit today.
I did, yes.
Okay, so kinda tell him, tell him what you wanted to come up with.
So essentially what's been happening, we've been having conversations with the soccer club for the last year, year and a half. Um, and trying to work out something to get the concession stand back open out there during this, their, their events specifically, but, um, other sporting events that might happen out there. So, um, they finally have us talk into it. So what we would like to do is, we would like to be able to use the existing concession stand area. We're not asking for you to fix it up at all, um, we're not asking for you to really do anything other than just, um, give us exclusive, uh, use and control of that concession stand building. Um, and the primary reason for that is in order to, to do with it what we are hoping to do, um, we're gonna be bringing in our own equipment and supplies and, um, we just wanna make sure, nobody can tell me for sure how many keys to that lock that's on the building are floating around right now. So step one would be changing the locks. Um, but we just wanna make sure that with all of our stuff and inventory in there, that, um, nobody else has access to get in there to get to it, so, um.
Except the public works director, he's gonna have to.
Yeah.
Do we normally give a key to the, to, to the public works director and police?
Yeah. The police won't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're fine with either one of those two, if they, you know what, I may leave the coffee pot on if they wanna stop out every couple of hours. Just make sure it is good. Um, but yeah, we're fine with that and I, um, you know, so the first step was just, or the next step, I guess, in the process was coming here and, um, getting your guys' blessing and, and figuring out what we need to do to put into place that, yes, we can't have property for a year or whatever the season or what you guys wanna do, um.
So if, if you leave your stuff out there, I imagine you're gonna carry insurance to cover that in case of vandalism.
Yeah, we'll have, similar to renters insurance. We'll have insurance on anything, property inside.
So you wouldn't be, the city wouldn't be liable for any of this?
Correct.
So what was your conversation with Rick?
So we've been working on this for over a year and, um, Rick came up with, on his own, um, the Boy Scouts were thinking about opening a concession stand area out there. So, um, I had a conversation with him today, the struggles that he was kinda talking about was there's, you know, what, wasn't going to be anything formal. It was going to be the scouts and some volunteers and just kinda, you know, chips and pop and Gatorade and some of the basics. And so the conversation I had with him was, one of the, one of the main reasons we wanna do this is to support the town and to support the sports program and the sports complex and, um, so him and I had the conversation about how to maybe work cooperatively. So one of the ideas that we came up with was, well, maybe a couple of times, um, they just pick a weekend that they wanna do a concession stand and we just don't open up that. They can set up underneath the little covered patio area and do their thing as a fundraiser and go from there. But I think, um, I think it'd be pretty easy to work together with them to.
Greg approached me a few weeks ago at church and asked about it, and I said, we'll talk to the president of the soccer association, most of my daughter, which she did, but I told him to come and get on the agenda, but he forgot about that. I said, well, I'll call Dustin, see if he can work something out. He says to get enough help, he can't say I could be there every week because he needs parents to help out. He said he might be there this week, might not, so hopefully between Dustin and him, that can work.
And we were going through this, I mean, we, we ran through a million different scenarios, you know, maybe the soccer parents would volunteer and we could just kind of oversee it or, but anybody who's trying to coordinate volunteers, it's, it's a chore. So we decided that we'll just kinda take control of it, make it our own, and then, you know, work with whoever else.
And I wanna tell you, if you do any construction or whatever, keep track of what you're doing because we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated to this soccer complex. It's still working with Chip to where it's going. I think a big savings we're gonna have is, they talked about utility buying brand new poles with lights out there. I talked to the welder up here, I said, just take our existing pole, weld another arm on it, so that'd be a significant saving. So hopefully, we'll have more than enough money to, to be able to help out.
Was there some issues with the electrical panel?
It's done, it's.
And that's that one part's done.
They got the shed where the soccer balls, Gary Wolf worked on stuff, so I think electrical's okay now.
So this would just be at that, the concession building out by the soccer field?
Yes, yeah, the rest in that concession.
Cause I, I know, I know we had a guy in here trying to start a softball league. And obviously, we always, you know, that went last year, the first inaugural year, so hopefully that grows, so somebody. That if it got that big where they had to have one, that would be open to whoever wanted it, or would you be wanting to do that also?
So our thought would be that we would, we would get the rights to the building for whatever term you decide, if it's for the year or whatever. And then if, um, there was going to be another event, like say the softball league comes back this year and blows up and they say, gosh, we can, we would really love concessions out here. Um, we'd be happy to work with them and try to make that happen. We're not, um, committing to being open for every event to sell out there.
Okay.
Um, but obviously, if we're, you know, trying to use it as a, as a business and a way to support the sports complex, we're gonna try and do that there.
Cause I know they mostly had that, well, they had all of their games at the Gin Play fields, which is quite a distance from the, some, from the thing there, so I was thinking if somebody had it up there, so.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think, you know, I think. Thirty thousand, we could get a shuttle, we could back and forth.
But didn't they also have, didn't the softball people bring in, did they bring in a food truck?
Food truck or something. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, you know, is it, is it just gonna be?
So, well, I mean, yeah, how does that play, so if the softball people bring in a food truck one night?
That's completely up to them. I, my assumption would be if they're bringing in a food truck, they're probably not reaching out to me to say, hey, we want you to be open for games.
Well, I think that they want, they want it, it's just such a loophole, but.
Yeah.
So you could bring it, I mean, you're saying that it would be okay for them to bring in a food truck up front, but you just want sold to that concession, like, nobody can go into that place.
Just. Correct, that's what I wanted to clarify, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we don't, I, we don't want control over the whole sports complex, if.
Okay, all right, all right, that, you got some.
Uh, I, uh, I just make a suggestion of, nobody's utilizing it now, he's offering to make something of it.
Well, yeah.
Why not do a one-year lease agreement and let him have it for a dollar a year? And he covers the insurance, the liability, we'll work out a lease agreement, bring it to you for review and approval.
Sure, and I think we were headed that way, we just had some additional questions on, like I said, you know, was it the, was it the whole complex, we expect you to have, you know, if you're saying no, you know, other people.
Do it for a year, it doesn't work out, you don't have to, you know, I mean, if you, if you find that it's not your cup of tea, then.
Correct. Yep, absolutely.
Has anybody left you inside, Dustin?
Why are you laughing? So we've been talking about this for a while, and last fall, I actually walked in and looked at it.
Pretty rough.
And that was really the point where we said, you know what, this is just gonna work. But the soccer club is very persistent, and the more we thought about it, the more we thought, we, we can make something work out there. I haven't been in there since last fall, but.
Major cleaning, it's.
So with their major, who would, who would write up the?
Certainly.
Certainly, okay.
We'll just write a lease and, uh, give it to the look at it. We're good.
I'm, I'm good with the cleaning, so that's good.
That doesn't happen.
Okay, need a motion.
So would, would we have to wait until the next council meeting before we?
Next council.
We have a special meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
November twenty seven or twenty eight.
I think it's twenty, two weeks on Monday, two weeks on Monday, it's based on thirteen, so.
Which is. I think, is it Monday?
Mondays are twenty seven, we have to.
We're, it's, first as it's.
It's two.
Two weeks Monday, yeah, that's what it is.
So would you guys be comfortable with me getting access to it before then and just starting to kinda get our plan put together and?
If you're okay with it.
Awesome.
So who has the keys, just Jim?
Jim and everybody down.
I probably have one.
A lot of, a lot of people.
You can use mine.
If you, if you change the lock.
We have keys, Jim has key down.
Okay.
You'll be reimbursed eventually once we get our money.
Okay, we need a motion like two.
Move it, call off.
Call off.
Second, anybody?
Yeah, that's good, I think so.
I'll sign it.
Second, how do you vote, Patrick?
Same.
Call off.
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes. And thank you, I'll be looking forward to a nice warm drink.
Renzo?
Of course, we can do.
Uh, cold soccer morning.
Two thousand twenty three manhole, uh, or.
Don't sit, oh, swell, yes, dead office.
I moved up the first.
Yeah, no, that's good, you had moved it successful.
So when we received bids on rehabilitating the manholes around town in December, we had a base bid, an alternate bid. If we would have awarded the alternate bid, would have put us off the budget, it was for four manholes and an alternate. So I talked to Jim and if we had two manholes, Jim gave me two manholes that were the worst of the four. And so if we rehabilitate two more, that puts us within the budget that we originally had, so.
And we're getting the money from the American recovery, so if you wasn't the budget.
So you're doing two more within the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's good.
And this was that money that we received, that we, the American rescue fund or whatever?
Right, yes, yes, some of it went to the rehab, so, yeah.
Yes, movies and.
Okay.
And concrete is actually two seventy. And concrete is actually two seventy a square yard now?
Well, that's installed, but that's a.
Oh, I was gonna say.
But that, yeah, that, that's not the raw materials. I think it's still.
It's still pretty high.
Pretty high.
Two more manholes. You have motion.
I'll second that. Calvo, how you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Ranzlo?
Yes.
How close are we? Start on the sidewalk. Says weather clear?
Yes, the, um, we don't have a schedule from a contractor yet.
Okay.
Still working its way through the DOT. As soon as we get a contractor on board, we get him, then I think we need to, you know, notify the, the property owners along for a second, but when things are gonna happen. But I don't have a schedule yet.
Now, when it comes from the Catholic school, it comes out this way, it'll go straight. The sidewalk, keep going straight to my daughters, probably.
Yes.
At thirteen, you're going to purchase land?
I don't know. I mean, I don't think they hear that. You guys had some questions. We give you the answer in the back.
So we had some questions about the property last time, mainly about an alley or a road.
The alley and the utilities.
Yes.
So there are no utilities that actually cross the property, but they are available if anybody wanted to go on it. They're not too far along. Um, and from everything that we can tell, that alley is an alley.
Okay, so there is access back there.
Right. It runs east, west.
Right. So.
Yeah.
Then you back in there. Matt, have you heard anything? I know at one point you had uh, told me that you'd had some people looking at possibly buying that and for development?
There has been interest in it. It does have its challenges.
No more than one hole. Probably a lot less.
Uh, so there's been interest in it, but at the same time, I'm, there's not enough interest that I would hold for all of it.
Has the Neils put together a purchase agreement to even propose something to the city?
No, but that's what gonna be the thing. You're like, we don't have anything from him now, but it's, if the council is okay to receive.
Well, we're always okay to receive, just what their purchase price was. It doesn't mean we have to accept it.
We can get a hold of him and tell him to put it off. If the council is okay.
We actually made it?
Yes.
I mean, just because he puts together an offer doesn't mean we have to accept it.
So, so let me ask you, are, are we willing to sell?
Do we access, you know, do we wanna sell?
That was gonna be, thank you, thank you.
I think we need to start there. Are we willing to sell?
I don't know what, I mean, it would be one less thing for the city guys to have to take care of.
I don't think it is.
Just one thing that came up since last city council meeting. Uh, Forest is part of our uh, green space initiative, I'll call it. Grew up a, a set of recreational trails proposed, just as a jumping out point for things to think about. And one of the trails he drew goes through that property, I think along the alley. I know it's long. I don't know if it was long in the city right away or, or because of the city property, but um, that was part of that plan, I believe. We, Matt and I had a meeting with the Natural Heritage Foundation and they specifically asked about whether the trails all stayed on city property. And that was one that they asked about. I hadn't thought about it before. Just, I did, I'm not saying that's the reason to go forward or not, just like something else to think about.
I mean, it sat there for how many years?
Rich Anderson's cleaned up a lot.
I was gonna say, it looks like part of the alley.
Right.
I wouldn't have considered.
I mean, but, so is Rich Anderson interested in purchasing it?
He is.
He is. Okay. So it's just Alan and Tony?
Yeah, I think Rich has just cleaned it up just for something.
Yeah.
For his personal.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, for me, I'm okay with selling it and just having somebody else maintain it and make sure it is getting maintained.
Now, I guess I have a question. If, if that's what they were working on, maybe a trail system, if that links into something north of town, some south of town, I mean, would, would we incorporate something like that if they're kind of working on?
I would just keep it in mind. Sell the property, don't leak out the alley.
See, that's right. Alley.
I see. Okay.
Yeah. Keep the alley, just, you can sell the property, but keep the alley. I don't think that's a bad idea.
We can, I mean, since, since there's no real movement from you and that was a concern, you know, so nothing there. We got somebody that's interested, like you, keep the alley. You know, to do that. I don't see what, you know, something to recommend.
In the normal situation, you probably explained that was being the best, we sell a city property. We put something in the label.
Right.
Design a city attorney to say we're selling. So.
But he said we don't have to.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm giving the voice way. If you wanna put this kinda stipulation that you just said. So it will be clear to everybody that you have this stipulation. Or you can just ask them to give a bid and so.
I'd like him to put together a purchase agreement and just see what, I mean, if it's not something that is what we feel is worth the piece of property, then we don't have to accept it.
So it's up to you. You can.
So my motion would be to, I don't, do we need a motion or do we just say, go ahead and?
I think just contact him.
Doesn't, you can contact our government.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but just make sure you let them know that we're not willing to vacate the alley.
Right.
Which are the areas.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, fourteen, Police Reha had a paper, if you just wanna read it. I don't wanna go through the whole thing, but councilman Calvo and myself and Chief Reha met with one vendor and given his proposal, but he did say, we call them Armadillos where he would put them at different, four by four posts around town to do a speed study. So before you have to have that, that's no cost to the city.
So he was talking about round town?
Well, and so he's, he would work with uh, Chief Reha on places to put these. And it's gonna give you a snapshot of where your trouble areas are. Okay. Um, it was a very good presentation.
Is he available to come here to one of our meetings?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, so, so what he wants to do, um, he did it kind of backwards, like I said. Usually he'll do the study and then he'll try to meet with the individual councilor or community and, and give you that information so you can see uh, what's going on. Now, they have the same technology as this other one, you know, with the cameras that can see the license plates, you know, and all that. And they say, yeah, they're, they're instantaneous too. I, I, I was more excited about that proposal than I was the first, you know, and I'm not, we all have about it either, but this one uh, was a lot better, you know.
I mean, we owe it to them to, but let, let them do their study coming.